Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is November 8, 2017. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Middle School Library. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will oppose, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. I would note tonight that Commissioner Shum is away on a business obligation and our solicitor is being ably represented by his associate, Mr. Andy Freemuth, to my left. I would also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session meeting on November 6th at the conclusion of our regularly scheduled workshop meeting on the same day. The Board discussed a matter of litigation with the township solicitor. I want to acknowledge that today is the day after Election Day, and I want to thank all the poll workers and the committee people and the candidates and the voters who actually showed up. Thank you. Turnout was high, and hopefully every election will get higher because it can always be higher, but a lot of people worked hard, and that's important. I want to announce correspondence. The Board of Commissioners received a letter on October 19, 2017, from the MetLab Corporation. MetLab expressed its objection to the enactment of a local services tax. The letter states that "At a time when businesses are struggling to contain costs to maintain competitiveness, the tax may create a burden that will offset any benefit." Now we move on to the public portion of the meeting. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Do we have any public comment? Okay, we will now move into the committee reports. I will kick it off as the Chair of the Internal Affairs Committee. Item two on the agenda, we've done item one already, which was the correspondence. Item two is the November bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the October check reconciliation in the amount of $1,409,849.52 and the November bill listing in the amount of $998,791. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will oppose, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The next matter is the budget schedule. There will be a budget presentation made in a few seconds when I get to it. Then, on December 13th, which is our business meeting in December, we will have a budget hearing and budget adoption meeting at 7:30 p.m. in the new township building. That's Wednesday, December 13th. At this point, I will read the budget statement. This is the proposed budget, and we are working on it. We will have a workshop meeting two days prior to that enactment meeting, and we will again take it up at that meeting. Springfield Township Board of Commissioners proposes a balanced operating budget for 2018 of $17,330,860 with a real estate tax rate of 4.148 mils and an earned income tax rate of 1%. The real estate tax rate is general purpose tax of 4.148 mils, the court-approved amount of zero, the special purpose tax amount of zero, adding up to 4.148 mils. To summarize the impact on the typical taxpayer as a result of the 2018 budget projections, the taxpayer will realize a $32.10 real estate tax increase and a $3.19 refuse service fee increase. In the years 2006 and '07, the real estate taxes were reduced from past years. The real estate tax rate for 2008 through '12 remained unchanged. In 2013, there was a modest increase in the taxes followed by a reduction in the tax rate in 2014. In 2015, real estate taxes were increased but held steady again in 2016. The 2017 real estate taxes were increased by $50.10 principally due to debt service related to the municipal campus renovations. The typical household in Springfield Township with a $175,400 property assessment will pay $727.56 in real estate taxes in 2018. The 4.6% increase in real estate taxes is principally due to an increase in debt service related to the municipal campus renovation project, increased costs associated with employee contracts, contributions to the volunteer fire companies, street resurfacing activities, and increased insurance premiums. The 2016 refuse service fee was the same as in 2015, but the 2017 fee was increased by $10.13 per year or discounted annual rate of $202.37. The resource recovery plant where the solid waste is processed is increasing the fees to the township by $1.13 per ton in 2018. The 2018 discounted annual fee for refuse service will be $205.56. Beginning in 2016, recyclables were no longer a commodity to sell, and costs are now incurred to process the materials. The township will continue to fund its general budgetary obligations through traditional revenue sources such as real estate tax, earned income tax, real estate transfer tax, mercantile and business privilege tax, licenses and permits, fines and department earnings. However, in 2018, a local service tax will be enacted whereby individuals employed within Springfield Township will pay $1.00 per week or $52 annually. Those who do not earn more than $12,000 annually are exempt from the tax. And we'll come back to that. The 2018 preliminary budget will be made available for inspection in the office of the township manager, 120 Willow Grove Avenue, Winmore, and in the township library, 120 East Willow Grove Avenue, Winmore, beginning at 5:00 p.m. on November 8, 2017. The 2018 preliminary budget will also be available for inspection in the office of the township manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Winmore, after November 27, 2017. Summary copies of the budget. What's the difference there?
The dates.
The one's the preliminary budget and the other's the preliminary budget?
Yeah, it's just that early on, it'll be available up at where we are currently in Winmore.
Oh, it's just the new address.
Yeah, it's the address, and then later.
So it's moved on November 27th, it moves because we moved.
We're gonna pick it up and move it with us.
Right. So it's available at the current township building on Willow Grove Avenue, end of the day, that's tomorrow, right? And then after November 27th, at the new township building of 1510 Paper Mill Road. Summary copies of the budget are also available upon request. Board of Commissioners will accept questions and comments on the budget at their workshop meeting on December 11th at 7:00 p.m. and again as part of the budget hearing and budget adoption on December 13, 2017 at 7:30 p.m. All aforementioned meetings will be held at the Springfield Township Building, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Winmore. That is the announcement for the budget. And now what we're going to do, that was item four on the. And then the next issue, what we're going to do, and I have a good thing to read, has to do with the local service tax, which is mentioned. And as you'll see in a minute, it's not clear where the Board stands on that. So I will make the motion, and I guess somebody can second it if they want, and then we will discuss it and move on from there. So that's item five on the agenda, and here's the motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance number 952, an ordinance enacting a local services tax for 2018. The annual tax is levied and assessed commencing January 1, 2018, upon the privilege of engaging in an occupation within Springfield Township during the tax year. Each person who exercises such privilege for any length of time during any tax year shall pay the tax for that year in the amount of $52, assessed on a prorata basis in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance. The township shall use no less than 25% of the funds derived from the tax for emergency services. The tax is in addition to all other taxes of any kind or nature levied by Springfield Township. The tax shall be no more than $52 on each person for each calendar year irrespective of the number of political subdivisions within which a person may be employed. Any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the political subdivision is less than $12,000 for any calendar year in which the tax is levied is exempt from the payment of the tax for that calendar year. Other exempt include any person who has served in any war or armed conflict in which the United States was engaged and has been honorably discharged or released upon honorable circumstances and suffered a service-connected disability declared by the United States Veterans Administration, and any person who serves as a reserved component of the armed forces and is called to active duty at any time during the taxable year. That is the motion on the local services tax. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and at that point, I know there is questions and comments. I open it up to the Board.
I can kick it off. You know, this is something that, I will just say, I'm not a fan of taxes by any stretch of the imagination, so I've been sort of struggling with this, but I think that under certain circumstances, I think this is a judicious tax. First of all, it's not, it's limited to a $50 tax, so it's not overly onerous. Secondly, we've been discussing how we can contribute to our volunteer fire companies, and this is something which we've never done before, and it's something that a lot of other townships are doing. And when we're the other, we have to come up with the money for that. If a resident of our township works somewhere else, as an example, they work in Lower Marion or any other township, many townships that also levy this kind of a tax are going to be paying it anyway. The fact that people who are working in our township and work and live elsewhere are contributing to our local services, I think that's important. And last but not least, I guess, is the fact that if we don't levy the tax, the money, because we're going to be providing contributions to our fire companies, it's going to come from somewhere, so there is some sort of a, I'm not sure it's an exact dollar-for-dollar trade-off with, you know, extra, you know, municipal taxes. I'm not sure exactly what the math is on that, but there's no doubt that.
About $22.
It's about $22. So when we're the other, you know, our people in our township are going to have to pay that anyway, but at least some of it's coming from people outside of our township to support our volunteers and other services. So that's where I stand on it. Are there questions?
I have also comments. I fully endorse all the comments that Commissioner Baird, Standish made here, and I would only add that the tax, there is, as you mentioned, Mr. President, there is an exemption for low-income employees in the township, so if you make $12,000 or less, you do not have to pay this tax. So that gets around a lot of the, you know, very, very occasional laborers and, you know, kids working and part-timers. I also think it's important to remember that apparently 52 out of the 62 municipalities in Montgomery County already employ this special local service tax. I, in fact, myself, I pay this in an Abington Township where I work. So that's about 84% of our brother and sister communities have already enacted this in Montgomery County. I think additionally, it's only being based on wages. It gives our retirees and our pension people a little break here as it clearly will reduce the overall requirement, the overall millage requirement, to support our 2018 budget. I note that there's about a $22 offset in anticipation of this tax being passed within our current budget. And as Baird mentioned, with our contemplated additional support for both our firefighters and our EMT professionals this year in the budget, that will help, the estimated first year revenue of $168,000 will help offset those additional costs that we're going to incur. So for all those reasons, I am in favor of the passage of the ordinance 952, the local service tax.
Thank you. Other comments? Eddie, do you have anything?
I do. The only thing that I am not in favor of the increase, and the reasoning that I'm not in favor for it is because it places an undue burden on the township residents that are also working for the township. And I understand that those cost to those very important and necessary facilities such as the fire company, our volunteer fire company, and ambulance company, et cetera. But I just think it places an undue hardship on those residents that are township employees. And I think that should be spread evenly across through all of our residents. I think that our residents are aware that this is something that should be equally supported by the community. So for that reasoning and for the undue hardship that it would place on those people who are residents and also employees, it double-dips them. They are going to be playing double. So therefore, I am not going to vote in favor of this tax increase.
Thank you.
I'm sort of struggling with making a decision, at least a definitive decision on which way I'm going to go. I've talked to many of my colleagues in the last 24 hours, and appreciate the conversations, but I'm finding it difficult to make my decision 100%, you know, yes and 100% no. I see the pros, I see the cons. I am in favor of supporting the, you know, additional funding for the fire companies, but there's still a lot of unknowns leading into next year for some of the residents with the increased sewer rate, the potential for a higher school tax that we don't know yet. So, I mean, and I have to agree with Commissioner Daley, we brought up last week, that this is probably something I would have liked to have thought about for a little more than a month so that I could get all the facts and figures and weigh my decisions, and as of right now, I can't support this because I can't get behind 100% that I want to do this at this time.
Thank you. I agree about 100% with Eddie, so write this down. I agree with you 100%. I agree with Mike with the struggle with it. You know, I think you just need the political courage to either raise property taxes or lower property taxes. Over the last 12 years, I think we've lowered property taxes two or three times on occasion, and then when we felt there was a need, taxes were raised. I've disagreed with some of the raises over the last few years because I think we have paid for a municipal campus. I think, again, we're asking this year to not only pass a local service tax but also a real estate tax as well. It's not one or the other, we're going to be doing both, and in the future years, there's no guarantee that it won't be both again. Again, going back to political courage, back a few years ago, we had the atria property here. And estimates now, over three years now, construction may have been done already, and we would have generated at least $150,000 a year for that. Right now, the school district doing their multimillion-dollar project can't wait for a tree to be built, which could bring anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million dollars a year. But if we would have had the political courage three years ago, we would have been able to lower the tax burden on the residents from across the street for the school district, a unique opportunity that doesn't come along often. And now, they're three years behind building up their tax base for that project, so that's going to be a burden on the taxpayers next year because of the new campus over there. We're now, if it's $150,000, $450,000 in the hole for three years without passing a atria. So we have a goal, we either build new revenue sources or look at our expenses, and if we continue to keep doing this, what's next? What's the next tax that we're going to pass? All of a sudden, we're going to become the city of Philadelphia, passing a soda tax, passing another tax, passing another tax. We have 7,200 homes, the folks want to live here, we have a great community. I think they understand when we have to lower and raise taxes, and we could debate about when we could do it or look at expenses, but this goes to 40% of our residents. So again, they're going to be double-dipped, as Eddie had described. They're just going to ask, the highest employer is the school district, they're just going to ask this back in collective bargaining. They're going to get this money back. So it's going to be paid by the taxpayers again. It's almost like a snowball effect. So for those reasons and for other developments that we, for whatever reason, didn't have the political courage to pass, Lloyd Estate, we're back here again three years later because we didn't want to pass it, and the residents may be in a worse situation now, and we've lost three years or two years' worth of revenue. So for those reasons, I just think we need the political courage to either look at the property taxes, look at our expenses, or try and find other sources of revenue instead of passing another brand-new tax. So for those reasons, and also I agree with Mike, if it fails today, the next board that comes in, I would strongly suggest begin this in January so you can have a full year of debate about it, have residents that, excuse me, I apologize, two or three folks that are here at the last minute of the last hour when we have to pass this. I'd rather begin it in January and February where you could have multiple people see it on the video, see it on the TV. Hey, I want to come out and talk about that tax. And one more thing about the unknown sewer rates. Wasn't going to get into it, but since Mike brought it up, no, I'll wait, I'll wait. I'll hold my mic for next month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a few comments, and one, some of them are procedural. One is that the way the law works, if we're going to pass it, we have to do it now. This isn't something that when we do the budget, because it's a new tax that has to, there has to be notice to the state. That's why we're having the vote now. It's just as if we didn't now, it's not like we could say, oh, look at the numbers, we don't want to raise it an extra $20 and change our mind. So it's now or next year. As far as how I view it, well, as far as the way it works from accounting standpoint, because Commissioner Shum is not here, there are six of us. In order to pass it, it needs to have a majority. That means it needs four votes, which also means that what I say is maybe a little irrelevant, but still going to say it. To me, this is all, it's a policy-driven thing. It's not, and I think the Board's shown the discipline, it's not a spending discipline thing. Because the way it works in any business and any government is you figure out what you're going to spend, and you figure out how to pay for it, and you figure out the best way and the least painful way to pay for it. And this is that half of the equation, and I'm heartened that our discussion has been limited to that because it's easy to get, to say, well, why don't we deal with this spending and this spending? But that's a separate discussion, and this is just how do we pay for it? And as it shakes down, and Eddie said it perfectly, although I come out the other way, is this is a shift away from property tax, away from the responsibility based on the size of your home to whether you work in the township. So it is a shift from the retired people or the people that work in other townships because they're already paying it, they won't be hit by it, to those who work in the township. And reasonable minds can go one way or the other. I think to provide tax relief to the retired people, even if it's $20 a year, is a good thing, and that's how the townships all around us, why they all have it, is because they think that. We had a referendum on the ballot yesterday that talked about that very issue, and it passed. Statewide, it passed, and that's to help with the relief of the school funding burden on property tax. So that's just one of the ways I look at it. Another way I look at it is, you heard the numbers, then I'll repeat them. The benefit of this would be 168,000, we're guessing, because we don't know who works how long, but we're guessing 168,000 the first year, which is actually only three-quarters of what it will be because of a delay, that's only getting three-quarters. So it would be 224,000 the second year, and you heard the number, that's first-year number would save, every house would have $22 less of a burden. If you worked in the township, you would be paying 50 more. Both of you did, you'd be paying 100 more, so you'd lose on that. If you were retired, worked elsewhere, you'd come out $22 ahead. That number grosses up to 29 next year. The other thing that's interesting to me is because people from outside the township will pay the tax, there is a true windfall here because that's money that we would all have to pay as township residents, but for the people that don't live in the township and work here, they would pay money. And that number is about $100,000, that's within that 168, but it's about $100,000 for next year and $130,000. So that's found money for us in that we, looking at the whole town, all of our taxpayers together, that would be a true windfall to us. So I think that's worthy of consideration. I think that's really all I have to say, but that's why I've been the one that's supported this for many, many years because I believe in relief to seniors, and I'm usually the only one. We have proposed this, I don't know, three or four times over the last 10 years, so it's nothing new to me. I'm used to losing this vote, but it sounds like we're close. But again, if it's a 3-3 vote, that means it does not pass. And are there any other questions? And you're all allowed to change your mind. I encourage three of you to do that. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Please record a 3-3 vote. So the impact of that on the budget, which is now $23, or $22 out of balance, will be adjusted and discussed at the next meeting.
That's not the final.
Correct, that's a preliminary budget. Okay. At the workshop. Yeah, we'll be rolling, because we actually will be trying to pass a budget on Wednesday. And the way it works for us, since we're meeting on a Monday-Wednesday cycle, it's difficult for us to adjust the budget because the way the budget gets passed, there are like eight different resolutions with different things being moved around, so we really try and work it out at the Monday meeting to get a consensus so we can have the resolutions all worked out. We've fallen into that trap before, and then we have to adjourn for 20 minutes while everything gets recalculated and reprinted, which we could do, but that means we'll be serious about reaching a consensus on the Monday meeting in December. And that, now I've shuffled all my papers. There we go. That would conclude my report, right? So now I will call on the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities, does he have a report?
He does not have a report.
Okay, Commissioner Shum does not have a report, so I will call on the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have one motion tonight. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1439, a resolution urging the locally elected state officials to oppose House Bill 1620, a bill that eliminates local management of wireless communication power installations. The federal government provides that municipalities have the authority to regulate wireless facilities via their local zoning regulations, and the Commonwealth permits municipalities to manage public rights away to protect the public safety and the character of their community. And if you remember, a while ago, we actually passed that ordinance, we revised the ordinance. So House Bill 1620 entitled Wireless Infrastructure Deployment Bill would strip municipalities of the current authority granted by both the federal and state governments to regulate wireless towers. So that is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And what this is, is we are trying to control our right-of-way is when they want to put towers on kind of every power pole, and we have acted to do that, and this is the legislature trying to do an end run to take that back. While the technology is something
the legislature trying to do an end run to take that back. While the technology is something that we will embrace and will certainly be with us, but we want to have some control over it because the aesthetics of it could be really bad. Or if they're not, I think we are better able to be stewards of our own community on that. So that's why we're suggesting this. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. We move on to the Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Daley.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. President. The filing zoning petition will be heard on Monday, November 27th, here at the, 7:00 PM here at the Springfield Township Middle School, 1901 Paper Mill Road. The petition is for George Hudson, 1147 Traynor Avenue to Blue Bell, is requesting the filing variance in order to establish a motor vehicle shop at 1150 East Mermaid Lane, Winmore, PA 19031. One, to allow a motor vehicle repair shop zoning relief. Two, to reduce off-street parking spaces from 24 to 12. And three, to reduce parking space size from 20 feet by 10 feet to 18 by 9 feet. The other announcement I have, I'd like to say thank you to all those who participated in the Henry R. Chiermonti Park dedication that occurred this past Saturday, November 4th. Talking to Mike, I believe there was over 75 to 100 folks that attended. I'd like to especially thank Sharon Vecchione from the High School Interact Club, John and Donna Halligan, and Michelle Sabliss of O'Leary Mill Road, who helped the Board of Commissioners with respect to, just help out with the park, the festivities. And we had hot chocolate, coffee, cookies, dough, all kinds of good things. It was a truly beautiful celebration. We even had balloons flying up into the air.
Yes, we had about more than a dozen beautiful Mylar balloons to give out to the kids. At the end, they were tied to a bench. And one of the kids got a little eager and went over. And we watched them all go very, very far away.
But it was, oh, and Carrie from the Park and Recs Committee, she also brought balloons for the, for the actual sign. It was just a really special event. The family is truly appreciative of it. And I think it's a great enhancement to the park and it brings some nice happiness to the park. So thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
If I could ask apart from my report, Don, is there, is there an update on where the status of the park property is? And the reason I ask is because yesterday, a resident brought me a piece of garbage that indicated that there's something secret going on up there, that we have an endless parade of environmental experts going on up there. And there's no end in sight for the project. So is there, and there was quite a few residents that brought it up. So is there any way to have a status on the secret project that we have up on the park property?
There's absolutely no secret project, Jim. You, the Board had hired BL Companies, it's an environmental firm, to do further testing. It's required by the Phase II PADEP process. So BL Companies was up there maybe three weeks ago, testing inside the buildings. US EPA had tested around the properties, the open areas, but PADEP wanted us to go in the buildings. And so they've taken samples. Some of the results are back, not all of them are back. And then based on what the results are, we'll have more work to do.
And why are we doing that? We just doing that for an endless parade of experts? Why are we doing that?
We're doing that to secure liability protection from PADEP against any future liability related to environmental issues that may or may not be on the property. So it's a step for the, taken by the Board of Commissioners to protect the township against liabilities associated with environmental issues that may exist there.
And that would be the township residents paying any litigation cost that would incur?
Absolutely.
With respect to where we are with the project overall, is the, with respect to the money we save by having the dirt taken from the municipal campus, and where are we at with the actual park project?
On the actual what?
The park project and grant applications or?
Well, we have to wait to get this information back. So the PADEP says you're good to go and move forward with demolition of the remaining buildings. We had relocated a lot of our extra fill from the municipal campus to the Titan Corp. because A, we need it over there, but B, we saved about $140,000 in construction costs because we were able to dispose of it on our own property and reuse it. So that's, so we're kind of waiting to get clearance, environmental clearance, to move forward with the project.
So I will update the residents again about that because I did. And I just want to make sure I was correct that we were wasting money up there.
Yeah, I don't know what you said to them, but that's.
Pretty much that. I just want to make sure I was correct. Thank you, Mr. President. That would be my report.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Daley. And move to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one report this evening about the recycling. Please, I'm announcing that during the month of October 2017, Springfield Township residents recycled 178.7 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 82.9%. The net cost for the month was $17,549.53. That is concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I'll move to the Chairman of the Human Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one motion this evening. It's concerning the Flower Town Country Club swimming pool renovations. In July of 2017, the Board of Commissioners issued a request for proposals for professional engineering and architectural services for the one, evaluation of the existing swimming pools; two, conceptual plans for repair or renovations; and three, conceptual plans for redesign of the swimming pools and related facilities. Proposals were due on August 18th of 2017. The township received three proposals. The proposals were received from the Wallover Architects of Lancaster, PA, MKSD Architects of Allentown, PA, and GLP Architects of Glenside, PA. On September 20th, excuse me, on September 20th of 2017, and again on October 9th of 2017, the Board of Commissioners met with the respondents to the request for proposals to assist for the qualifications of the respondents. As a result, I move that the Board of Commissioners engage the services of Wallover Architects pursuant to their proposal dated August 18th of 2017 and amended October 23rd of 2017. The costs are as follows. Phase one, existing conditions analysis, $8,465. Phase two, conceptual plans, repair and renovations, $5,295. And phase three, conceptual plans and new construction, $12,735. Excuse me. The request for proposal only obligates the township to pay the architect for the actual services rendered at any time during the project. The LEC of the Flower Town Country Club has agreed to pay for 50% of the professional fees associated with the concepts, concept, concept plans once the existing conditions, conditions analysis is complete. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Hang in there, Eddie.
I'm trying.
We gave you a long one with a cold.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? So what, that's a little confusing, but it's bifurcated in that the first one analyzes the pool, the second one figures out how you're going to save the pool, and the third one is how would you build a new pool? And you may end up doing both because you don't know which way. But if the first one makes it clear you really need a new pool, or you can definitely save it, then we don't have to do both two and three. And that's, that's why there's three phases. And we're authorizing all three. We're only committing to the first one at this point. Any other questions or comments?
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
I'd just like to add one other thing to my report, Mr. President, is that due through the expert and friendly, the expertise of Charlie Carraba through at the Parks and Recs, and also in partnership with my church, the Mount Airy Church of God in Philadelphia, we are able, we are now a part of a league. The Carson Valley Children's Aid Basketball Team is now in a league, the Greater Philadelphia Christian Athletic Associations. League play for the basketball team ages 13 through 16. For this team, will begin next Wednesday. It was a lot of hard work. But once again, I'd just like to give a big hands up and a big recognition to Charlie Carraba of Parks and Recs. Charlie was a big yeoman in working with our church and making sure that this project became a success. So having said that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. And I want to point out that that's just one of many efforts that we have going on to broaden and deepen, deepen our relationship with Carson Valley. It's been done at many levels, police staff, neighbors, commissioners. And I think a lot of that is bearing fruit and is building a better relationship. And Eddie has been the yeoman in really taking it on. And I think you've found it really enjoyable and rewarding too, which is, that's beautiful when public service can be that way. That is the end of our committee reports. We are open to any public comment at this point. Can you come down and state your name and address, please? Take your time.
My question is, is the ordinance 952 now dead for a year?
Yes.
Okay. I have, you know, I have 20 employees, live outside the township, don't have children in the township, they will pay the 1%, okay? And they don't even come into the township. But they get a call from the office, which means they have to pay that. They do that, okay?
Do they work out of their homes? Or where do they work out of?
No, they work with different sites.
Does that, would that trigger it?
They pay it.
Yeah, because they have control and they're in Springfield.
They get a phone call from the office.
I suspect you've looked at it carefully with that.
Oh, I certainly.
And they're all making more than $12,000?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. Definitely. Okay. So if I had to tell them, you're going to pay another $52 a year, because they didn't know whether it would be the same thing, even though they don't use the roads or whatever, or they liable for that? You know, I mean, they already pay 1%.
Sounds like it, yeah.
And the township benefits 100% from that 1%. None of it goes to the schools.
Doesn't it go back to their hometownship? Or do we keep it?
If they have a local tax. If. But at least 15 of them do not have a local tax.
And if they work in the city, they have to pay the city wage tax. And half the, half the money will go to the school district.
For the 1%?
Yeah, for, if they're, if they're residents.
If they're residents.
Yeah, if they're non-residents.
Okay, I have a colleague who lives in New Jersey. Obviously, he doesn't have anybody in the school. He works in our office. Okay, he pays the 1%. All of that, it's my understanding, none of that goes to the schools.
Right, because he's a non-resident.
It all goes to this township.
Because he's a non-resident.
Yeah. So they already benefit, you know. And if I then had to tell this gentleman, gee, guess what? You got to pay another $52 a year. And to your point, it's 52 this year, next year it's 104.
No.
No, 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 that one is.
Oh, you're 1%.
Why, why do you say that?
Why? Because everything's bubbles.
This date would have to pay, we're not allowed to raise it. So unless you know something we don't.
You're not allowed to raise the 1%.
We're not allowed to raise the dollar a week.
You're not allowed to raise that either?
No, absolutely not. What more are we allowed to raise?
What the one of four was, is if a husband, let's say a husband and wife both live and work in town, then they'd be paying $14.
Yeah, but that's still, it's no more than a dollar a week.
Okay. It would never change.
No, I mean, I don't blame you on that, but we can't.
When we'd be meeting in the office today, I said, I'm going on meeting.
No, I promise that. It was going to be zero because we just voted that way. No thanks to me.
That's even better.
But it would be, if we did do it, it wouldn't go up. Now you've got, with this whole new school thing, if that ever comes to fruition, then that'll change everything.
I can't understand why. They're literally down that school. That's a whole other ballgame.
No, that's not us.
Okay, no. That's a whole other ballgame, okay? Can renovate.
Okay, thank you.
And there's people in our office who went to Penn Manna, you know. And one girl said, what's the matter with that school? Of course, it was 30 years ago. It was okay when I went there, you know, but that is a different ballgame.
Thank you for coming out and being heard.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment at this point? There being none, I want to make a comment, one final comment, and that this is, as we mentioned our last meeting, in this room, we've been here, what, more than a year and a half, right, at this point? Nearly two years. And we want to thank the school district for making this available. For those of you on TV, we're in the middle school library. And while we haven't been able to eat cookies at our Monday meetings because you don't eat in the library, other than that, they've been a great host. And Commissioner Graham can't hear us talk because of the fan behind him. But for those of the seven of us, six of us on this end, it's been good. But we appreciate the way the schools work with us. And we look forward as the township building opens up in a couple of weeks in the library in January probably to share all that new capacity with the community overall. There's lots of good meeting space in there. And hopefully, we're all paying for it, and we'll all benefit from that. That's all I have. At this point, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned. And I'll get my gavel back.